Call the council meeting to order. Ally, could you please take role?
Councilmember Bruce Bassett. Councilmember Mike Cerro. Councilmember Mike Grady. Councilmember Dan Gross. Deputy Mayor El Jinky.
I'm here.
Mayor Jim Pierman.
Here. Great. And Councilmember Grady will be joining us shortly. And so with that, this is a special meeting. Tonight is basically dedicated to the presentations from our potential new council members. And before we start, I thought it would be, one, we want to, as a council, and I think as a city, thank everyone who put their name forward. The resumes are humbling to read them and to see the type of people that have put their name forward. And I think that most of us regret that we can't do a motion and just enlarge the council to 22. But we can't do that, so we've got to make a choice. Then Dan goes, "I don't think so." All right. But with that, and I think that for those who have never done something like this before, this is what I think is a very, very noble thing, to put yourself out for public service in such a way. It's a lot of work if you're selected. There's a lot of sacrifices with family, you'll find out. And you don't rightly understand that until you take the role. And for those who, unfortunately, we can only select one, but I think that you are really, truly, all winners. And I hope the people that are not selected will be encouraged by this process to look for possibly running in the next election, or election in the future, or we have lots of boards and commissions that you can put your name forward. And there's lots of things that you can do in the island. So I hope that if you're not selected, that it doesn't dampen your enthusiasm for public service, but in fact, kind of ignites an interest to go forward. So that is it. And then for those who have kids that might be watching this and siblings on TV, it's pretty cool they're doing this, kids and wives and husbands, and it's a great, great thing. So with that, the process tonight, what we're going to be doing is, we've slotted five minutes a person, and what we'd like to do is have you come forward, and we have a random number. You all know your numbers. Ally's going to be calling them out in sequence, but you all know your number. And basically, we have it set up for three minutes. Is that right, Ally? Three minutes to light? But you have five minutes. And so what we'd like you to do is tell us, introduce yourself to us. Tell us about yourself. It's your time. At the end of it, it is open for council questions, if people have questions for you. Personally, I want to let you know, I don't intend to ask questions, so don't be hurt if I'm not going to ask you a question. The process that we've got is from now until the 18th, it's a time for us to meet and have coffee with you, or talk with you if we have questions. And I anticipate I will be using those days. And some of you have known, who have talked to with me already, that if you call me, you're going to be donating hour of time of pulling Ivy and Pioneer Park. And that's the deal. So an hour of my time is going to cost you an hour. And so that's mine, and everyone has their own different, what they would, or where they'd like to meet and how they'd like to conduct that. So on the 18th, so you know, it'll be coming back to the city council. At that time, the formal business starts. At that time, names will be put into nomination. There will be no votes, culling down anything tonight. Tonight is, I hope, an evening that you'll enjoy, time to introduce yourself and to the council, and let the process take its, you know, over the next five days until the 18th. So that is, that's what's going forward. Councilmembers, any other things you'd like to say? Did I cover it? Bruce? Okay. With that, we can start. And by the way, one candidate asked me, "Do I have to stay for the whole presentation if I have an early number?" No. So after you present, and the council, feel free, you're not losing votes or anything like that if you want to go home, because with the timings, you notice, if you pulled a late number, it's going to take a while to get to the late number. So with that, Ally, could you call out the first three?
First up is Patricia Patty Darling. After that will be David Wells, and then our Aaron Cornblum.
So Patty, please come forward.
My name is Patty Darling. I am honest, fair, and I have good enough sense to make wise decisions. When I was running for council three years ago and doorbelling, I knocked on this person's door, and this man said, "Who are you and why should I vote for you?" And so I told him that. And he said, "Okay." But you know, even that was a great experience, just meeting people on the island and getting to know what their ideas were and listening to their thoughts. And, you know, I've lived on this island a total of 15 years. And this is a way to give back. This is a way to serve my community. There's challenges. You all know them better than I do, budget and transportation and safeguarding open spaces, growth management, emergency preparedness. I can help. Besides, I bring a balance to the council in representing women and seniors. There's a large percentage of women and seniors on the island, and I think they would be represented well by myself. I have a lengthy portfolio of leadership positions. Director of nursing, managing 250, 300 women, four men, as well as being commissioner of hydroplanes, managing 400 to 500 men, three women. So I know I can work with anybody. I really, I love pulling people together to gain consensus. That's fun for me. It's always a challenge, but it's good. I know you can't please everybody, but I always do the best for the most. On island, I'm a member of the emergency planning committee and, or emergency preparedness committee, and I'm the medical lead volunteer for that, for that organization. I have been a member of the stakeholders committee, which was council-appointed to study the parks levy. I have held and still hold some leadership positions in Mercer Island Rotary Club, as well as the Mercer Island Senior Foundation. Off the island, I have been on the board of directors and had leadership positions with state, national, and international organizations. I'm a nurse, and health is really important to me. Health of the island, in sustaining our open spaces, in making good decisions for city services. My personal health, I ran 20,000 miles in 20 years, including seven marathons. Now, I ride the bus. I also walk my dogs every day, and I do swim and cycle around the island every week. I'm a political moderate. I'm an independent thinker, and I believe I could contribute to the good works of this Mercer Island City Council. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Questions? Mike?
That's a question.
Please.
Well, Patty, thanks for all the work you do for the community, especially with, on our emergency preparedness. I know you're very active with that. We just went through a budget process, sometimes painful, not, sometimes not so painful, but hopefully you saw some of that process, or you're certainly aware of that process, the budget constraints that we had. Do you have, or where are some of the ideas that you would bring forth on the council with reference to budget, especially budgeting going forward in what I will say is going to be a new normal, be that on the revenue side or on the expense side?
Well, I'm not intimately involved with the budget this time, but I just see little things. I go to Luther Burbank every day, and I see, especially in the summer, the city trucks that are parked for several hours doing work. Now, I'm an old Scottish person, and maybe this is small, but I was thinking, wouldn't it be nice to have someone sort of be a driver and drive around and drop off the equipment and the people, and maybe have less vehicles to worry about? And then I just read where Governor Schwarzenegger has cut half the cell phones off of the city pay, or the, Jerry Brown, excuse me. Schwarzenegger's replacement. Anyway, you know, those are little things, probably, but I think if you add up a lot of little things, they can make a difference.
Great. Any other questions? Great. Well, thank you so much, Patty. Thanks for starting it off. That's great. I noticed, just as we go through, we want this to be really comfortable. We have the lights going on here. If you run over, you know, a little bit, don't, don't get excited, please. Try to be calm and relaxed. I know that if you haven't done this in front of people before, what have you, might be, you know, a little excited. So please try to be relaxed as you can. With that?
Next up is Dave Wells, and then Aaron Cornblum, and then Clark Powell.
Hi. My name's David Wells, and I look at this opportunity to serve on the city council as a way to give back to the community that I have enjoyed for so many years. I would like to see the continuation of the island's style of living that makes Mercer Island so special. I feel my experience as an estimator and project manager would be an asset to help evaluate and budget city council projects. I hope to add insight and creativity to this process. I am interested in many local issues, including government, environmental issues that could be obtained to maintain the quality of life we have here on Mercer Island. Transportation is very, is a very important issue, and the I-90 changes to our access is a major concern of mine. I would like to serve on the city council for a variety of reasons. We have a variety of parks unique to other communities, with nature trails, playgrounds, ballfields, and many parks having access to Lake Washington. I would like to see these enjoyed by islanders in the future, as we have enjoyed them in the past. I have previously stated transportation to and from Mercer Island is something all islanders should be concerned with. I believe the light rail in Seattle has not been what planners thought it would be. The cost is high, the ridership is low, and they are plagued with noise complaints. We should learn from this. Busing and van pools are considerably less expensive and would provide better access to Mercer Island. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Questions? Yeah? Yeah? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much.
Aaron Cornblum, and then Clark Powell, and following Craig Peterson.
Good evening.
Says we're out of order, and that's why everyone's rustling. We don't have these numbered, so we're not, we're trying to find your paperwork real quick. That's what's going on up here. Okay.
Good evening.
Chris, Aaron?
Yeah. Good evening. I am excited. I am excited because our city is blessed in so many ways with so many incredibly talented people and amazing resources. And I'm excited because I know Mercer Island didn't become that jam by accident. It happened through hard work, hard work through your work, through the work of staff, and through the work of our incredible fellow islanders. And that's why I'm excited to share with you this evening three ways how my hard work and commitment to service throughout my career would empower me to best serve our fellow islanders with you on city council. First, I excel in building consensus and in bringing others together. As president-elect of Seattle's History Museum, the Museum of History and Industry, I have worked over the last year to help resolve a multimillion-dollar funding dispute with the city of Seattle and the Seattle City Council. As a Microsoft attorney, I fought cybercrime, working with officials from the United States Federal Trade Commission and our attorneys general, including General McKenna, to help protect consumers and keep them safe online. These experiences have given me an appreciation of how to work effectively with government, of how to listen to our constituents, and garner consensus. My success on these initiatives is greatly attributable to my ability to understand how to communicate effectively with these key audiences, skills that I would bring to the council to work on important initiatives now facing our city, challenges such as transportation, and preserving our thriving, thriving community. Second, I bring a passion for our future, for our children. As parents with one child at West Mercer Elementary and two soon to join, my wife and I are deeply committed to our youth. I serve as appointed by the mayor on the Youth and Family Services Advisory Board, and I've devoted significant time to coaching, the Dinky Dunkers of the JCC, the T-ball and baseball programs with the Boys and Girls Club, and receive positive feedback from parents about my positive approach to working with players and teaching style. As an alumni volunteer, I interview Mercer Island youth who have applied to Princeton University for admission. And this is a family passion. My wife, who's here this evening, is a co-president of the Mercer Island Preschool Association, and has worked to help raise important funds for our community and its enhancement. As council member, I want to continue to grow the positive relations we now have with the school district, and to continue to explore innovative initiatives, like the recent inter-local agreement with the Mary Wade Pool. Lastly, I'm committed to helping to foster environmentally and economically sustainable and balanced growth. With the scheduled arrival of light rail in our community, we have an incredible opportunity to update our vision and plans for the central business district and the city as a whole. As council member, I want to help you and join you in helping to drive that vision and seizing this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to help shape the direction, to mold the transportation system of the future as it plows right through the heart of our island. I want to passionately represent the interests of our islanders and ensure that the needs and rights of islanders are appropriately prioritized as the project proceeds. We have much to celebrate on Mercer Island, and I believe that our future into 2011 is indeed bright. And in closing, I respectfully ask for your support and vote on Monday, and would be honored for the opportunity to work with you and the council and represent our fellow citizens to help build a better Mercer Island. Thank you, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you. Questions? Yeah?
So what was the record of the Dinky Dunkers?
Councilmember Grady, we have, Cerro, we have not, we have not played our first game. In fact, I know Councilmember Grady is at a game coaching as we speak, so I know he recognizes that as a priority as well. We've had two practices. We look good. I like our odds, the Titans. But we haven't received our jerseys yet, and as you know, jersey color for kids is pretty important. So I'll know more after we receive our jerseys.
If the council doesn't mind, I have one other question.
Please.
All right. Museum of History, it sounds like a pretty involved organization. How do you think that'll help you, if you do think it'll help you on the council, at the Museum of History, your experience with them?
Absolutely. So interestingly, the museum sits at the foot of the 520 Bridge, so also facing some interesting transportation challenges. It is slated for demolition as a part of any of the 520 Bridge reconstruction plans. And so as a board, we've been looking for a new home for our institution, our cultural institution, for some time. We found that home at the base of South Lake Union in the U.S. Naval Reserve Armory Building, but orchestrating that move with the city, who is our landlord and future landlord, and with the state, who's forcing us out, has involved a series of negotiations involving things around tax credits, around historic credits, around relocation expenses, and money flowing in all sorts of directions. So striking a deal with the city and now recently renegotiating that deal, working to find a solution that met the needs of both the city and the museum under, similarly to Mercer Island, not the most positive of economic and budgetary climates, has been a challenging and rewarding experience. And so bringing that expertise, bringing that relationship and networking abilities to the council here, I think, would, would be of similar value.
Other questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great. And as I said, if you present, you're not required to sit for the rest of the evening.
Next is Clark Powell. After him will be Craig Peterson, and then Eric Wyker.
Hi, I'm Clark Powell, and I applied for this job because I would like the city council to adopt a public transportation plan. In this county, we have a public, a cash-rich, public transportation environment, and I don't think community can really take advantage of it or defend itself from it unless it has a public transportation plan. I know that there are public works that are going to come with a light rail, and I know if we don't have an established plan, we won't have credibility, and without credibility, we won't get what we want. So I can give you the example of Seattle, because out of this transit spending, Sound Transit is providing Seattle with $123 million trolley from the International District to Capitol Hill. Now, I don't want a trolley for Mercer Island, but I think it shows that there's money there for, for improvements that, that will make the transit work for us. Also, I think the way transit is handled in this county, we have Sound Transit working very hard to produce a plan that is useful, but it's also, has to have a plan. That's, that's the way that, that Sound Transit can survive. So if it doesn't have a project, we're going to, or it's going, it's not going to survive. So the most important thing for Sound Transit is to make sure the project goes through. So if, if we're going to avoid being caught in, in that desire, we're going to have to have our own plan and say, "Well, if you want to do what you want to do, you have to make this plan useful for Mercer Island." In addition to that, I think traffic abatement is pretty important on Mercer Island, and I think if, if we had a transit plan, a public transit plan would provide us with the possibility of lowering traffic by getting people to take the bus. And I would recommend that, that the city enpanel a group of people, preferably people who take the bus to work, to work out the details of what the plan would be, so the city council can discuss it with them. I think bus riders would be useful for two reasons. One is that they would provide their own experience, plus if they ride the bus to work every day, they would be able to talk to the other riders. And I think that bus riders really should need to be part of the program. And the most important thing they provide is political cover for Mercer Island and the council. I don't think King County needs people who drive around in single occupancy vehicles telling them how to run the transit program. However, if we have a panel of people who use mass transit, who are trying to improve the situation and provide their best ideas to make rapid transit, or public transit increase in the county, in Mercer Island, that gives us more credibility. So you don't want to, to have to suggest unpopular things to Sound Transit unless you're actually trying to promote transit and you have that credential.
Thank you.
Clark, you talk about the Sound Transit, and you're absolutely right, there's going to be change, and where there's change, there's opportunity, and with this opportunity, we're talking leverage. If, given, given the change, and the money's going back and forth, and we had leverage, how would you, what's the one project that you would use that leverage to accomplish? Either, I'll leave it at that. What's the one project that you'd take on to, to take advantage of that leverage?
Well, personally, I, first of all, I think, I think, I really think we need a panel to discuss this for a while, but personally, I would, I would like to see three light rail stops on the island. I think what we have now, well, the light rail is not really going to change anything. We already have a 550 bus that does the same route. We have a park-and-ride, and I don't know if it's going to get much bigger. And we already have a slight traffic problem at the park-and-ride. So I don't see any other way to get more Mercer Island people on the light rail without having a stop at East and West Mercer Way. I think it'd be really great to have a stop here, because once all the city employees started taking public transit, and I know they want to, you would have 50 experts at your fingertips that would help you make decisions, policy decisions.
Other questions? Nope? Great. Thank you so much. By the way, I've said it a couple of times, the whole design of this is that after this, get to know you, we really encourage you to call council members and schedule coffees and things, and vice versa. We have five days. So with that? Ally?
Next up is Craig Peterson. And after that will be Eric Wyker, and then David Laub.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be in front of you today. My name is Craig Peterson. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review my materials, and so I won't bore you with what I've already put in there, but I'd like to add to that. The why, I think, is like many of the other people that are here, it has to do with serving the community. I am a relative newcomer to the island. My family has been here for two and a half years, but my wife's parents, where she grew up, have been on Mercer Island for a long, long time. Her brother lives here, her sister lives here, and now we live here, which is fantastic. I've had a service commitment for many things that I've done throughout my life, historically, at the national level, in pharmacy, I am a pharmacist, culminating in being a board trustee member for the American Pharmacists Association and speaker of their House of Delegates, which is the policy-setting body for American pharmacy. Locally, I've always been involved through youth sports, either as a coach, or on, on a board, or most times, both ti, in both ways. I have been in those positions for baseball, hockey, and soccer. When we arrived on Mercer Island, the first thing I did was hook up with the baseball program, and I'm on the board there. Now, what I'd like to do, after doing a lot in my career, is give back to my community where I live. And this was an opportunity to do that. My skills that I bring are a sense of volunteerism since I was very young. I bring a great deal of leadership, having served in many different leadership positions. I can bring a successful grant history that I don't know whether exists or not, but I certainly can bring that, having been a past faculty member and successful grant writer. I'm inquisitive, I ask a lot of good questions, and I will listen well. I'm very collaborative, I'm not divisive, I believe in coming together. Although not everyone will agree, I believe that I play well in the sandbox with others. And if you talk to the folks that I know well, you would agree that I do that. They would agree I do that. I tend to think strategically, and I think that is something that is important. Regionally, I have great concerns about transportation. I think many of the other folks that have spoken, and you're probably going to hear that all night, have concerns about transportation. We have many things that are happening to us. My issues with transportation have to do with what, what is going to happen to Mercer Island when we do get light rail. Ultimately, I think that is a good thing. I don't think that that is changeable, but we also have tolling on 520 that could impact Mercer Island. I think that's right around the corner. I know it's right around the corner. I believe that we're going to have higher traffic volumes on I-90, so that's something that we need to be vigilant about. My background as a healthcare practitioner will help with human services. I have great interest there. And I'm also interested in water quality. One of the things that we think about a lot as pharmacists is what happens with all of the pharmaceutical waste that ends up in the water supply. Most recently, the EPA has issued new draft guidance, which is going to change what happens with that. So I'm interested in that on a regional level. Locally, as I said, transportation, we need to accommodate vehicles, cars, bicycles, pedestrians, and we need to make that happen. I think we need to fund the road diet. I think that was a great decision that council made to support that, but we need to now fund it and make it happen on Island Crest Way. And I'd like to focus on creating community, because the wonderful things that Mercer Island does right now is, is fantastic. We need to maintain that. We can't be too quick to cut things that allow the community to come together. And so with that, I am open to any questions, and thank you again for the opportunity to be here.
Great. Thank you. Questions? Bruce, anyone?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was the same question I asked Clark about, you have transportation as one of your top priorities. Again, with change comes opportunity through leverage and the money's going in different directions. How would you use that leverage if you had your, the golden, the silver bullet project? How would you use that money and that leverage?
I do not have a specific project or an agenda. But what I do know is that, and I think that the council has been very vigilant when it comes to transportation because it does have a huge impact on folks that live on Mercer Island. You know, we only have one way off, well, two, one going east and one going west. That's it. And so all I can say is I would work as diligently as you would ever imagine to make sure that we can maintain what we have and make it so that it doesn't create a negative impact, but rather it augments what we already have. My brother-in-law said something to my wife the other day. He says, well, if they do take Craig, he says, they'll get somebody that will work very, very hard. So, thank you.
Questions? Great. Well, thank you so much.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Next is Eric Wyker, then David Laub, and following him will be Adam Cooper.
Hello, I'm Eric Wyker. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight about my qualifications and interest in the city council position. I'm a business development manager by title, but what that really means is that I am a dealmaker, and that's what I do day in and day out on my job. So what's a dealmaker and why is that relevant for this city council role? Well, dealmakers need to find common ground to reach agreement among people who have very different ideas about what their preferred outcome should be. And dealmaking requires listening intently to identify the critical issues that those people represent in order to make connections and negotiate compromises. Success for a dealmaker means not just reaching an agreement, but reaching the right agreement. And to do so, that means that the participants afterwards are going to feel like they've had the ability to influence the outcome, and certainly, they're going to be happier to have had an agreement than no agreement at all. So how is this relevant for the city council vacancy? Well, certainly, there are contentious issues in the city and passionate advocates representing each of those issues. This is great. It's good to have involved citizens with strong ideas and opinions, but in many cases, this can end up creating conflict where people are talking past one another instead of creating solutions to move the city forward. A dealmaker can help. A dealmaker can help strike agreements to keep the city strong, move the city forward so it continues to be a great place to work, play, and live. Some examples I would highlight are issues around budgeting and transportation planning. These are issues that have strong advocates whose position might benefit one group while being a detriment to others. Solutions for these kinds of issues might also come from non-participants. So citizen engagement is something that I feel can really help because bringing more people into the discussion can lead to creative ideas, for example, to increase revenue or cut expenses that might not have come from the original stakeholders. So what are my dealmaking qualifications? Well, I've been a business development manager for 16 years now and built a career as a dealmaker. The job skills I've developed along the way include primarily negotiation, business planning, and project management. Look forward to answering any questions that you have about my skills, experience, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Questions? Questions? Mike? Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Eric. You talked in your speech about revenue, and also in your summary, you talk about addressing the decline in tax revenue. In a general or civic, whichever you choose, how would you address our declining tax revenues?
Well, everything that the city's doing to maintain the community will help because we need to have a good housing base, obviously, in terms of prices and for property taxes and for new development. But the thing that I think would be a change would be to continue to promote the business environment in the downtown core and to think about what we could do. So, for example, some of the ideas that might come in from outside would be how to get people to the island for community activities that draw beyond our tax base so that people come in on weekends for this, that, you know, farmer's market, if it's something that has something that's more appealing beyond our community, our summer celebration, things like that, where we, you know, sporting events, things that the Chamber of Commerce and the community can get involved in to bring people in so that they're eating at the restaurant, shopping at the stores and whatnot. And those aren't our tax dollars, they're tax dollars coming in from outside. But that's just one example. I think having, you know, people involved who are the stakeholders there to bring in those ideas and develop the engagement will be helpful.
Questions? Great. Thanks so much.
Next up is David Laub, and then Adam Cooper, and then Carrie Wernick Newman.
My name is David Laub, and I've lived on Mercer Island since 1994. And I just want to say it's an honor to apply for the Mercer Island City Position Number One. The Mercer Island City Council has a history of good stewardship and strong leadership, benefiting all the residents of Mercer Island. To continue this history of excellence, the council needs its newest member to have a strong financial background. I believe I'm the only candidate with a strong financial background and experience. During the current economic situation, the Mercer Island City Council needs its newest member to hit the ground running. My experience as working as a financial consultant and volunteer with government entities from Alaska to Oregon will allow me to participate fully in the council's discussions and decisions. I was a member of the Government Finance Officers Association, serving on the Special Review Committee, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence and Financial Reporting Program for six years. I reviewed the annual budgets and financial reports of many different governmental entities. I know how to read and understand government budgets, reports, and accounting rules. I've been on the Mercer Island Utility Board for the past five years and currently serve as Chair. The Mercer Island Utility Board has addressed major issues over the last five years with the construction of the Lakeline Sewer Project, construction of the emergency water supply well for the Water Utility, and the renegotiation of the long-term solid waste contract. I led the utility board to reach an agreement in a consensus-driven process. Through the utility board, I have met and worked with many Mercer Island's dedicated city employees, and have presented several board reports to the Mercer Island City Council. I've been an active member and held several leadership roles in the greater Seattle area with the Seattle Chamber of Commerce, Bellevue Rotary, and the Washington State Society of CPAs. I'm on the Board of Directors and Board of Advisors of several local companies. This experience in governing, this experience in governing a company from the board is similar to the city council's approach to governing the city. The city must use a long-term view and vision when approving major projects, policies, and budgets for the city without getting bogged down in the detail. I strongly believe that my background in accounting, finance, and budgeting, and my ability to work well on executive groups, will be beneficial to the council and the city. I love Mercer Island, and I want its well-deserved reputation as a great place to live and work to continue. I'd also like to thank you for your service to Mercer Island and your consideration of me for the open position on the council.
Thank you. Questions?
David, thanks for all you do on the utility board. I know that's a big job. Fiscal or budgetary issues that you identify that as one of your strengths, can you briefly tell us some of the fiscal guidelines or budgetary guidelines that would guide you through the process?
I'm a strong believer in the POG approach to govern the priorities of government, which says, what are the most important, I'm sorry, Dan, what are the most important services? It works. You've got to prioritize what you have when you have a limited budget and say what's most important. And to me, public safety is the number one thing you have to ask for the first question. You also have to be creative on there. I was going to say, one of the things I did in my past, I worked with the Seattle Chamber of Commerce on the Seattle City Budget Committee. And going through that budget, they've got, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars on there once, and you really only have the chance to impact less than 5%. But the 5% can make a big difference. You need someone who can down look at the programs, know how to read it, how to understand it, to find out, is the service really being used? Is the service really providing value to the community? And if it's not, can I take those somewhere else? I'm also a strong believer in economic sustainability. You have to look at, can this sustain what it's going to do? That's both from an environmental and from a financial standpoint.
Other questions? Great. Thank you. I think it's, might be helpful for those who are watching us on TV, the candidates have done a beautiful job preparing quite a bit of material on their resumes, answering questions, and we've had this for a while now. So a lot of the things that we have, it's not that we're not interested in responses for questions, we have quite a bit of information in front of us. So just wanted to say that. So Ally?
Next up is Adam Cooper, followed by Carrie Wernick Newman, and then Tana Sen. Is that correct? Okay.
All right. Hey, thank you very much for the opportunity to get up here and do this. I can't really speak to all the other candidates that are here except for my two fellow commissioners, John and Steve, and I know they would both also be an excellent choice for this. Clearly, you do have a very tough decision. That said, I do think I am the right choice. I've been part of this community for 35 years. My dad was a preacher at the Emmanuel Church in the 70s and 80s. I went through all 12 years of school here at the Mercer Island Schools, snooker scout with one of the troops here that's still on the island. And now my kids are here in the schools, and I'm volunteering at those schools in their art programs. Five point five, or five and a half years ago, staff recommended me to the mayor for a spot on the Planning Commission. Since then, I've worked with, or they recommended me because I've been working with staffs around the region for years as a builder and developer. I understand, I understood a lot of the planning issues that we would be facing. Also, I'm very strong in solving puzzles independently. I've got a big-picture perspective on things, I take the 30,000-foot view, and I don't get bogged down in the details as much because that's part of the puzzle that I bring to the table. I have an open mind, I don't bring an agenda to the table. So I think that that helps me with what I really excel at, and that's the collaboration that is involved in what we do there. I enjoy that, and as I said, I excel at it. A couple of years ago, my fellow commissioners agreed, I think, to a degree, as unanimously elected me the Chair of the Planning Commission. I think that was also because not only do I collaborate well, but I'll also facilitate others in collaborating well together. This is one of the reasons I think almost strongly benefit the council, because the council is a body that needs to collaborate with each other, with the staff, and also with our community. This is also the kind of work that I now do for my own career outside of this, at the state level. I manage the office of a state senator where we, every day, take stakeholders, legislators, and I work with them and the issues and the problems that we have to boil them down to solutions. And that takes a great cooperative effort. It's my profession, it's my passion, and it's the path I'm pursuing right now. I look forward to working and traveling down that path as a member of this council, if you so desire, and proving my worth to this community so that in December, I mean, in November, I could defend my seat and defend your decision if that's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I actually do have one. Did you hear I was requiring people to pull ivy with me before you broke your arm?
I did, this is a fake cast.
Okay, all right, I'm just curious.
I heard a lot of rumors that was the most important one.
Great. Any other questions?
Adam, you do a great job on the Planning Commission, running that meeting. Let me say that out first. You talk about simplifying codes and ordinances, which would be great to do. Any, what are your kind of ideas on how to do that?
Well, I think that the system and the process that's been working the best for us on our commission is when we have people from the community who regularly work with those codes. We also have a few people on our commission that are very strong because they work with those codes every day, as well as our staff. And just facilitating a conversation that gets down to, and this is a detail thing, where we get down to the details of, this is confusing, these things don't line up, and just trying to simplify that because it is. There's a lot of very onerous code to go through when you're trying to figure things out. And as we've gone through that, we've found sections that don't make sense, and we've tried to wordsmith through those and to simplify them. But generally, I think the most important is to have people that work with them every day. And, you know, often, those are the people, you know, builders, contractors, that come in here and help contribute to the discussion, really give us a lot of.
Great, thanks.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Next up is Carrie Wernick Newman, and then Tana Sen, and then Debbie Burtland.
Having served in many leadership positions in this community, I have a good understanding of Mercer Island's strengths, areas of concern, and how various organizations operate, interface, and collaborate. I would now like to focus at a macro level by serving on the city council. There are a number of councilmen and current applicants who work in the private sector. My social service background and experience working in school systems will help to round out the council, council membership. Furthermore, as a social worker, I have experience with inter-agency collaboration, creative problem-solving, and working with people of differing views. I'm very organized and responsible. I do as I say, the best I can, in a timely manner. I'm particularly interested in transportation, using community building as a vehicle to increase revenue and reduce spending, and the health and safety of islanders. In anticipation of the light rail and increase in traffic once 520 tolling begins, it will be important to work with community members, Washington State DOT, and Sound Transit to help smooth this transition. The park-and-ride is often full, and it's anticipated to get more use once the rail begins. Furthermore, noise during construction has already affected residents living near I-90. Noise will likely increase once the rail begins. These types of issues need to be addressed well in advance. I believe prevention is equally important, if not more important than prevention, than intervention. Similarly, we need to start preparing for the possibility of I-90 being told. This will be a huge hardship for employees committing to the island, island residents, and business owners, many of whom are already struggling in this poor economy. I believe we can simultaneously save the island money while uniting and building a healthy community among residents. I have confidence we can maintain non-essential programs such as concerts and summer celebration without compromising essential city functions. Community-based committees could assist with implementation of and fundraising for such events. Also, we could start operationalizing aspects of the BPF plan using volunteers. For example, Policy 9.4 specifically calls for, quote, "service organizations to accept maintenance responsibility for sections of trails and facilities," unquote. Policy 9.3 could also be implemented using volunteers. Bottom line, we need to start organizing more citizens and organizations to give a helping hand. Not only will the events unite neighbors, it will save the island money. Furthermore, studies have shown that the more community members interact with one another, the lower their crime rates in those neighborhoods. We need to continue working towards improving health and safety on Mercer Island. Of the many areas of health and safety, given time constraints, I will only address one issue. It's great we have the new Peak Center, but for many teens, hanging out at the Boys and Girls Club isn't cool. Given Mercer Island has some of the highest rates of alcohol use among our upperclassmen in Washington State, we need to have more safe places on island for teens to frequent. Although I am passionate about certain issues, I would like to join the city council to represent the Mercer Island community, not to push a personal agenda. I will focus on issues and populations that are most in need of services and make decisions that will help the majority while remaining fiscally responsible. Finally, I have the time, energy, and dedication to work towards continuing to make the island a thriving community for all the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Chris?
Carrie, you have a lot of experience in youth and family services, and I appreciate the volunteer you do, volunteering that you do there. What's the one program that you think is most effective, well, the whole city with reference to social programs that are out there?
The one that's currently most effective? I think having the counselors, the youth and family social service counselors in the schools, I think that's very effective. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of good is going on already on the island. But that, I think, is a good, is best bang for its buck so far, that I see.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Tana Sen, followed by Debbie Burtland, and then Jane Meyer-Brom.
It is with great excitement that I stand here and share with you my interest in serving on the Mercer Island City Council. We all know the issues coming before the council will shape island and our community. We all know the issues coming before the council will shape the island and our community, not only today, but for many decades as well. I look forward to playing a role in shaping those decisions with a particular eye toward maintaining our excellent quality of life on the island. And by that, I define it as high-quality schools, easy access to Seattle and the East Side, safety, and our beautiful environment. In the coming session, the council will be addressing dozens of issues. Let me take a moment just to comment on three of the larger ones. First, city council and school district collaboration. Our school district is dealing with changes in enrollment and planning for the future. While the school district operates independently, the city should be an important partner in the planning and implementing of any bonds, buildings, and other plans the district has. Transportation, which seems to be a topic of conversation on Mercer Island all the time. As a mid-island resident, I know firsthand we need to increase the safety of the Island Crest corridor quickly. With the approach of light rail, we must focus on good town center traffic flow and anticipate parking needs and access for Mercer Island residents. We also need to preserve access to the express lanes. Thirdly, the budget. The city of Mercer Island has been blessed with strong finances for the past few decades, including a little bit of a cushion. However, even this economic recession has proven too much for the budget to handle and cuts were needed. Tough decisions were made. I commend the council, city managers, and department heads for the thoughtful solutions and suggestions they chose. As we monitor the impacts of the budget and plan for future ones, I think it is critical that we continue to make decisions and evaluations based on the established priorities of government and with the considerations of fiscal, environmental, and social responsibility. These and many other issues necessitate frank and continued discussion and examination, looking at many viewpoints, opinions, and facts. My strong foundation of education and experience, combined with my passion for good policy, placed me in good stead to engage on these issues in this way. Some of the skills I bring to the table include facilitating, advocating, communicating, budgeting, crisis management, working with the media, coalition building, and just plain working hard. If selected, I know I can hit the ground running, and I will not stop for the next four years. I look forward to working with each and every one of you on the council. Thanks for this opportunity and for your leadership and service. I'm honored to be among this group of distinguished candidates.
Thank you. Questions?
Thanks, Dana. You've got some experience in crisis management. How, what does that bring to the council and to the city? How do we benefit from that?
That's not what I meant.
I'll stick to what I think you meant. I do have some real-life crisis management experience, working with the Jewish Federation in the aftermath of their shooting and through two trials that they dealt with. And I hope this experience was never needed, of course. I learned a lot from that experience and worked with a couple of clients afterwards to develop and implement organizational crisis communications plans following that as well. I think our city is very lucky to have highly-trained staff and professionals and first responders who will really hold us in good stead during any crisis. As a city council, I think that our role is really one of leadership and communication during a crisis, and reassuring residents, sharing information that we get from the professionals, and making sure that we ourselves are prepared. So, and speaking of that last part, I think it's important that we have a lot of, we have an important role in a crisis management in advance of a crisis, kind of in a prevention component, again, being prepared ourselves, I think, being involved with the neighborhood emergency block groups, and encouraging other residents to be prepared to.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Debbie Burtland, followed by Jane Meyer-Brom, and then Bob Bursoz.
Good evening. It's a real pleasure to be here, and I was thinking, as I was listening to some of the other candidates, that I feel like there's a new group of people that I need to reach out and communicate with, because there's some really impressive backgrounds and exciting ideas and expertise, and I look forward to meeting them, whether it's on the council or other community activities. As many of you know, I've actually been an officially U.S. legal resident of Mercer Island since 1974. My parents moved here when I was in elementary school. I'm a graduate of Lakewood, South Mercer, which dates me, of course, the high school where I was involved in high school government, community organizations, et cetera. And I also think very consistent with a lot of island youth, I was excited to leave when I graduated from high school. I went off to school, went to university, and then was fortunate enough, in my opinion, to continue my education and my career overseas. And I lived in a number of countries, what we would often call emerging markets or emerging countries, where you learned a whole new respect for the principles of democracy, participation, personal sacrifice, and commitment to values that you believe in. And I think that was an incredibly important experience for somebody who had grown up in, I would say, a rather sheltered environment, which Mercer Island sometimes represents. The final place that I lived was actually South Africa, and I was involved in a number of very important government projects in the 1998, 1999 timeframe. And as I stood there at the electoral headquarters in Pretoria, I was next to people who had put their lives on the line, they'd put their country on the line, they'd managed to sustain a country and a set of principles without letting it erupt into civil war. And you can see, this is very dramatic when you compare situations such as South Africa in the late 90s to Mercer Island. But I think it established some principles in my thinking and the way I approached my professional life, my personal life, and my civic life, and that is a true respect for diversity, an ability to listen, an ability to respect difference, and to try to find a compromise that is effective and understood, although perhaps not ideal for every segment of the community. So, in 1999, I moved back to the island, and I think I was a fairly unique demographic. I was a single professional woman, and I actually bought a house on this island. So, coming back, you know, from some of these experiences, it was very interesting to sit through the elections of 2000, and I don't know how many of you remember, but there was a lot of rhetoric about family and Mercer Island and family values, et cetera. And having grown up there, I understood it in principle, but I was like, wow, I don't have a family. Am I a relevant part of this island? Am I a relevant part of this community? And after going through the thought process, I realized, yes, I was. Because while the rhetoric was defined by family and family values, what it really was, was a core set of principles that I think bind this island together, have historically and do today, and I think they're very important to sustaining our way of life. We have a value for education, we have a value for community in the broad sense of the island, but also in the smaller neighborhoods that we live in. It was, so it was very interesting to go through that process. And then I went away again for about 20 months, but I went away married, and I came back with one child and soon had another. So, suddenly there, I was back on Mercer Island, representing yet a different demographic, perhaps a more traditional demographic that we associate. And the last five years, I've spent a significant amount of my time focused on issues surrounding families, families with young children. I've been a very active member of the Preschool Association. I've been an active and board member at Emmanuel Day School. I've been on the Parks Stakeholder Committee. I'm now a member of the Open Space Conservancy Trust. And what I've learned is that that appreciation for family, but also that appreciation for the diverse demographics that reside on this island, that are bound by a core set of values, is a very important component in the way that we look at the issues and the problems, the challenges, and the opportunities that we represent. The families on the island are core, but it's a multi-generational environment. There are many seniors, there are many empty nesters, there are people who do not have children, yet these demographics represent the people who support and sustain and contribute to the Mercer Island value system and the way of life. They vote for our schools, they vote for our parks. The same thing can be said for a number of different demographics that we would be looking at to join the island in the next five to 10 years, as public transportation creates perhaps a more desirable environment for us. Are we going to be able to position ourselves in our services that is in an interesting and relevant way for them? So, I think that lends that appreciation for the family, the core values of the island, but also recognizing that we are diverse, and that we will look at the budget, that we will look at issues from very different perspectives. And I think I have a great history and set of examples by which I have done that. I've been working on parks issues. I've been looking at it from the perspective of seniors and not just from the young children who come. I've been looking at creating public gathering spaces, et cetera. You look at the corridor and the transportation issues, particularly around Island Crest. How do we facilitate that greater sense of community? How do we create a tight sense of community even in the smaller neighborhoods such as First Hill, where we put in a paved walkway and crosswalks, and suddenly saw the neighborhood become ever more vibrant? So, I think when I talk about or think about what I bring to the council, it is an appreciation for the broad spectrum that this island represents, but a common set of values, and an appreciation for a way of life that we have appreciated, that we have valued and hope and plan to continue to value. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Debbie, thanks for your time on MIPA and also the Conservancy Board there. Do you have, and you mentioned special projects or projects that you've undertaken. Is there a special project of particular note that you're closest to that kind of represents what you'd bring with the council?
Yeah, I think there is, and I appreciate the opportunity to address that. I think Councilman Grass is very familiar. About two years ago now, he received a letter from a grandmother on the island who has a granddaughter that she wanted to take to Luther Burbank. As many of you may or may not know, some of the playground facilities there are older and not necessarily appropriate for that two-to-four-year-old range. He brought me this email and this proposition and asked if I could go to the Preschool Association and see if maybe there was some interest in taking it on or a cooperative effort with the city. And there was a lot of enthusiasm in the Preschool Association. But in formulating that project, what we had to do was to recognize the physical limitations of the space. We had to come up with joint budgetary approach, one that the preschool could manage and support as a nonprofit organization with many commitments, one that the city could support and sustain given budget concerns and limitations. When we started to formulate the park and the space that we had, one could say it's pretty easy to put together some equipment that two-to-four-year-olds would like. What I encouraged was a perspective that said, this request came from, and with all due respect, referred to as a granny nanny, or some of the seniors, the grandparents who are a part of taking care of the children and sustaining the families on the island. Let's make sure the equipment that goes in there is something that somebody with physical, permanent, or temporary limitations could also use. You could take your grandchild, or you could take a young child there and not worry about having to reach up incredibly high, reach into tubes and pipes. The other perspective or lens that we put on that project was to recognize that the island does not have a lot of resources for the physically disabled, temporary or permanently disabled. And I'm not trying to imply that what is there right now is a perfect solution, but we did choose equipment that would hopefully bring forward this issue and perhaps provide just some recognition that we want those children, we even want those young adults out there and in the playgrounds where they may not have resources to date. So, during the course of that one project, there was a lot of budgetary, there was a lot of negotiation, there was a lot of demographics work, and to this day, the Preschool Association and the city and other organizations are looking to extend and expand those basic principles to that entire place space in its entirety.
Any other questions?
No, I'm just wondering, you're on the Conservancy Trust, and you guys should get together and thank your fellow applicants for all the work they're doing for you right now.
Absolutely. In that case, I wish that about 100 people had applied for the position.
There you go. Thanks, Debbie.
Next up is Jane Meyer-Brom, followed by Bob Bursoz, and then John Friedman.
Hi, I'm Jane Meyer-Brom. Hello, Mike. I'm glad you're here. You all know me, you have my resume, my list of civic involvements, my answers to the questions from the applications, so I'm not going to rehash that. I moved to Mercer Island in 1976. It was one year after the Ladies' Home Journal had declared Mercer Island as the second most livable suburb in the Seattle area, or in the United States. It had a wonderful quality of life then, as it does today, and I'm seeking a seat on the city council to help preserve that rather amorphous term, livability. In the mid-1980s, when Beth Bland was the mayor, I started working part-time at the Mercer Island Reporter, often covering city government. I've watched numerous councils and mayors over the years sitting at this side of the table. Later, as the editor of the Mercer Island Reporter, I at times criticized the council's actions and at times praised them. I was an observer. Now, I'd like to join you on that side of the table, taking an active role in examining issues and setting policy. I believe I have the experience, judgment, and temperament to be a good city council member. I have a journalist training in research and in listening to all sides of an issue. I'm a good communicator. I endeavor to be fair-minded and balanced in rendering an opinion. I believe that the best results occur when well-meaning people work together collaboratively to find solutions. I don't represent a particular constituency, but would strive to serve all Mercer Islanders. I don't have a specific agenda to bring forward, but I have a broad perspective. That, I believe, would be a strength I could bring to the council. I also bring a deep knowledge of this community and an understanding of how local and regional governments work. I've had experience developing and implementing budgets, especially at times of declining revenue. The council has just completed a difficult process of finalizing the city's biennial budget, and it's the first time, I believe, that the city has had to really pull in its belt and make significant budget cuts. I believe that for the next few years, the biggest challenge for the city will be to live within its means. I have an appreciation for the history of this community and the kind of people who settled this island. They were an independent, rugged people who appreciated the island's trees and open space. Long before there was a city, people got together and formed community clubs to talk about their mutual concerns. They were the for-runners of our present city government. I've been immersed recently in a history project of Mercer Island, and so forgive me if I, I want to close with the words of John Dunney, Mercer Island's first Realtor. He said this in 1947, quote, "I am convinced that the island will become the most desirable residential district near Seattle. Mercer Island is 4,000 acres of evergreen playground, forever set apart from the smoke, bustle, and noise of the city, ready for people who value good things to build good homes. Mercer Island has indeed a bright future," unquote. I have loved this community for 35 years, and now I would like to serve, serve it as a city council person. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I think it's Mike's turn.
Yeah, to be fair, though, I should not ask questions because I didn't have, I wasn't here to ask the other candidates.
That was the joke. Jane, that's fascinating. In '76, we were voted second, and then...
And, you know, please don't ask me what the first suburb, first most livable suburb in the U.S. was in that time, because I don't know that. I should find the answer. But it was the most livable suburb in the United States, second.
That's great. And then I just read where I think we got that number third or fourth highest livable place to live also. So, is there a tweak or a major project, do you think, that would maintain that status for the island going another generation further?
No, I don't think so. I think the city has been well-managed. I think the challenge will be keeping what we have, prioritizing so that we can deliver the services and stay within our budget without substantially affecting the delivery of service. And if we can do that without people noticing, that'll be wonderful, and it'll be a magic, a magic trick.
Other questions? Great. Thanks, Jane.
Thank you.
Next up is Bob Bursoz, followed by John Friedman and Steve Marshall. Next up is Bob Bursoz, followed by John Friedman and Steve Marshall.
Hello, I'm Bob, and I came here tonight to try reading something, which I'm terrible at. I prefer talking. But I want to bring some stuff from the past. My interest in becoming a council member is to ensure and maintain the high quality of living we have always worked for on this island. This is a temporary position, and I'm hoping that the electoral process will fill the process this November with the best candidate for that position. I'm here to fill in for that position until that time. I've grown up here on the city of Mercer Island. I remember when I was a kid when former Mayor Ben Warner and other council members would meet down at the Beach Club, and they actually designed the first city master plan. I've also, in the past, worked with the Design Commission and the City Council and helped build the first disco on Mercer Island. Yes, I do that myself. I also remember that the City Council and Design Commission did not allow McDonald's on the island until they agreed to not have the arches, so I know that we do things here very well. My wife and I have all went to the school district here from kindergarten for my children. And I actually went through graduation myself from Mercer Island in '73, so I am old. My children are all gone now, and they're out of the house supposedly. And this gives me more time to take on the challenges. I am, as I call myself, semi-retired, and now drive school bus from Mercer Island. This is a great way for me to meet the citizens, talk to people, and interact with the kids. They're great. But this also allows me to do time, allow work to do with this council, which most people can't do, because I do have the time available. My past is I'm a blue-collar worker. I've been one all my life. I worked for the school district while in junior and high school. And when I was 18, I joined the Mercer Island Volunteer Fire Department, and then later upon, I became a professional firefighter in Kansab County. During that time, I became a local union president and negotiator, and went on to receive my degree in public administration from Seattle University. I'm now assisting in the contract between the school district and the union and trying to negotiate a good answer for that. I believe that I can bring the views of a blue-collar worker to the council, which I know that this is a very unusual council and we're very good at everything we do. With all my newly free time, I decided that I should go do some interesting, so about five or six years ago, I decided to start going to City Council members. And I believe, except for one other person, that I have been to more City Council members than anyone else on the island. This being here has allowed me to be updated and know what's going on with the city and the council. I believe that being current with the issues and items that were happening will continue the council to be current and be run smoothly. This position is for eight months, and I believe that the election coming up will help in the future for other people who are running. I'm now old, and I reached a time to where my children are gone. And I found out that with that, that I now have a new group of people which I have to take care of, which are myself, my parents, and other older people like myself, and also ensure that the children are taken care of. So I think that this is an unusual opportunity to, where all groups work together and have a great community for this island. I want to ensure that the city is safe by keeping the high quality of police, fire, and emergency service we still have. We also make sure that our roads, water, sewer, and other communication and transportation services are well-maintained, and our parks and recreation is here for all. This island is getting an older population. I think we have to look at that in the future for transportation of those people, and we also have to make sure that we work with the businesses on the island to make sure we have a good working relationship with them, and they can help support the island as we support their businesses. In conclusion, really, I think that this position I'm asking for is good for me for I'm right of speed, I have a history with the island and the council in the past, and I can give the island or the council a different outlook as to opinions around what goes on here. And I hope to do this until I am re-elected or the next council member takes my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Actually, I do want to make note of your attendance at the meetings, and I think actually everybody at the council appreciates that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Next up is John Friedman, followed by Steve Marshall.
Gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Manager and Council Members, thanks for the opportunity to talk with you tonight. My name is John Friedman. Most of you know me and my commitment to the city. My qualifications, which include community boards, commissions, task forces, and my business, make me uniquely qualified to serve on our City Council. As a councilman, I would like to be a part of the decisions that will guide the city through the next year. This city means a lot to me. Maintaining the quality of life that makes our community unique is a big part of why I'm interested in serving. We have a lot of challenges going forward, and I think I can help guide us through. My commitment to the city is my biggest strength. I'm also not partisan in my views and will be a consensus builder on the council. I have a great deal of knowledge of the city's development codes and have been a part of the Planning Commission since 2003. I'm a former board member of the JCC on Mercer Island and have coached over 15 different Mercer Island youth sports teams over the last five years. Last year, I participated in a city youth recreation committee where our aim was to encourage the different recreation facilities to cooperate on programming. One of my biggest thrills has been serving on the AIPAC Board, where I have lobbied members of Congress and co-chaired our 2005 annual membership event. During my service on the AIPAC Board, I've developed relationships with both U.S. senators and most of our state's delegation to the U.S. House of Representatives. I think those relationships can only help as a Mercer Island City Councilman. So what? There are more than 15 smart, talented candidates here who care about the community, and they have great credentials. Why me? Well, I happen to believe there is a great deal of benefit in going through the campaign process, being exposed to the public through doorbelling, community celebrations, gathering endorsements, editorial board interviews, waving campaign signs at busy street corners, and everything else that goes into a campaign. I believe it is in the community's best interest to encourage candidates to run for office by rewarding those that put themselves out there on the campaign trail. For me, running for City Council in 2007 was a huge learning experience. Just talking with so many citizens in such a short period of time gives you a better understanding of the issues that are of importance. You are reminded that you are not just here to represent your views, but to represent the views and concerns of all our citizens, so I hope that plays a large part in your decision. I also have some specific experience in dealing with issues that the City Council deals with. Through my building business, I've installed close to a mile of underground storm utility systems. I have worked closely with staff, both in my business and my work on the Planning Commission, and have always treated the staff with the professionalism and courtesy that they deserve. My interests are broad in nature. I'm also a commercially licensed pilot and have taught out of the Renton Airport for years. I would love to represent our city on the Renton Airport Advisory Committee, and because of my building background, I would also be interested in participating in arch. Those are just two examples, and I'm sure there would be others that would be of interest to me. Thanks again for the opportunity, and I look forward to answering any questions that you have.
Thank you. Questions?
John, just to emphasize what you were talking about, ran a very professional campaign, and the experience, like you mentioned, is very valuable, because you see a part of the island that you just never thought you might see or that you would see during your normal course of events in a day or a month. You've got a construction company. Can you tell me in a little bit more detail how that will help you on the council, both understanding the island and also in our day-to-day, or actually I should say week-to-week, business?
My building business, how that will help me?
That business and also the experience of what you've gotten from being in that business.
Yeah, I mean, my business has done so much for me. I've exclusively essentially built homes here on Mercer Island since I started back in 2007. So there's a number of things that you learn when you're dealing with. Number one, dealing with the staff every day and developing the relationships with staff and treating them like, you know, they would want to be treated in professionally. The other things that you learn are how you, how the infrastructure of the city is built and how, what goes into certain decisions that get made when you're having to develop some of that infrastructure. I mean, you know, we have to develop some of those, like I talked about stormwater systems under the sea. We have to make decisions. I made decisions for stormwater. When I'm installing them, I make the decisions to sometimes put them lower than they might need to go because I'm going down a street, but I've planned for the future development, the potential neighbors along where I'm developing would want to tap into that sewer, that storm line as well. So it's just thinking ahead about these things when you're developing some of these infrastructure items. And then, of course, cost comes into these things. I mean, you have to think about what you're paying for. You have to look at these things, especially in this environment. You have to look at these things every, you know, it used to be, you know, you had to look at it every $100. Well, now, I mean, it's every penny that you've got to look at, and you've got to look at what you're spending on, what's important, and if you can figure out a way to do it better, less expensive, and do it so that potentially you don't have to redo something down the line. So I hope that answers your question. But I mean, there's just so many things, I mean, that when you deal with, dealing specifically in the city and dealing with the things that the City Council deals with like that, there's just so many things. I don't know. Hopefully that answers it.
Yeah, I have a question. Who won tonight?
You don't want to know. It was a sad day for those, for those 15 teams. I don't know if I'm going to count this one for tonight's. No, it was on Mike's team. Mike had a fantastically coached team, so can't say enough about it.
Excellent question.
I hope that was what you were talking about, by the way, because it's on the top of my mind, so.
Any other questions? No. Okay, thanks, John.
Thanks, guys.
That, I believe, wraps it up. Do we have, who's?
Steve's not here.
Oh, okay. Steve Marshall, another candidate, emailed today. He is giving testimony in, I believe, Portland, and he was trying to catch a flight to get here, and his flight, I guess we didn't get here on time.
It's close, but I think his earliest possible arrival here would be a little bit later than now, obviously, so I think it was 15, 20 minutes probably.
We also had one candidate, Mary Yakamoto, who was unable to attend tonight, and then we had another candidate who withdrew her application this morning. So that makes all 17.
That's it. So with that, winding up the evening, I think it's really important, this is a very special community, and all of us have multiple friends, I believe, and associates and people we admire that came before us tonight. And this is going to be a very tough personal decision for all of us. I think you should understand that. And I also think that it's really a who's who, and my read on it is, I was so impressed because when I first ran, I ran on the platform of I will always have time to listen to positive people with positive ideas. And I think we got 15 of those here tonight, so I just think that's great. So with that, any comments?
I haven't said a peep all evening, so I feel like I've got to weigh in at least a little bit. I wanted to just say that I was, I am extremely impressed with the resumes we've received and with what they say about the folks in our community who are willing to step up and get involved, who have gotten out and stepped up and gotten involved over the years and are here tonight. And after tonight, I'm also extremely impressed by your public speaking abilities, something that's always been sort of my Achilles' heel, to see all of you so comfortable in front of this crowd. I'm very impressed by that, too. I just want to say thank you for doing this, and to the, to those of you who aren't picked, I certainly would strongly encourage you to look to the boards and commissions of the city or consider running for a seat on council next year against Mr. Siro or Mr. Jenke. But, oh, yeah, I'm not up.
Are you running next year, Bruce?
So, thank you.
Same thing. And again, I apologize for being late, but John and I had a previous engagement, and the boys appreciate it, by the way. It's not easy putting yourself out there to run, to be on a board, commission, city council. And I really do appreciate all of you that have put your name in front of us. And again, if you're not selected, it's not because we don't like you. It's, you know, there will be a lot of discussions we'll have between now and the 18th. There'll be a lot of coffee that I know I shouldn't be drinking, but we will be. And for those who I was not able to see in person tonight, I've made an effort, hopefully, to visit with you one-on-one, and I will continue to do that between now and the 18th. Finally, I mean, the treasure that we have on our island is not only our kids, but the talent that we carry in all of our families. And to what extent we can share that and use it and keep this a very welcoming and diverse community, we've got a list of candidates here that is not only willing but is able to do that, and I am greatly appreciative. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, I also would like to thank you all. Appreciate it very much. I've been enormously impressed with all of you and what you've done, your resumes, and I think any one of you would be a great addition to the City Council. So again, thank you for being here tonight.
This is like a panel on Dancing with the Stars. No, it's, I, for once, I will not usurp the airwaves here. So I echo what Bruce and Mike and Al have already, and Jim have already said, and I'm sure Mike will also say. We are, it's amazing to me that so many good people have come forward and been willing to join this motley group up here who, who, I can tell you, we try very hard in what we do, and we always are looking for people to get involved on the boards and commissions. And actuality, the hardest place to get people involved has been with the council. There's been too many years of uncontested elections. So hopefully, this is an indicator of things that will change in the future and that those of you who are not selected tonight, I would echo Bruce's call, but just generally across the landscape, that we need to have contested elections, that gives validity to this council. And I do hope that the person who is elected, who is selected tonight, will have a vigorous opponent in November, because that's really important to this process.
Mike, anything?
I just reiterate what everybody else says, so I won't reiterate what everybody else has said.
Thank you for reiterating. Last bit, little housekeeping, just so you know. On the 18th, we will be doing an in-session, the actual nominations, and potentially the selection. Could happen, could, also could not happen that night if there's an impasse, okay? You do not need to be there, okay? That'll be a discussion amongst us to go through it. You're welcome to come and see that. If the person is elected on the 18th, they will be invited to the first, our planning session, which will be on the 21st through the 23rd. So I would ask you all to kind of look at your calendars and see what's going on the 21st to the 23rd of January. Also, if we are successful and we select someone on the 18th, they will not be sworn in that night. And the reason is that it's kind of a savoir faire that we'd like their families to be at the swearing-in. So they will be sworn in on February, the first meeting in February. And so that would be time for you to get everyone, your loved ones, there and great photo ops and all that good stuff. So anyway, that's the process. That kind of wraps it up tonight unless any, okay? Once again, thank you very much. I'm very proud of you all. Proud of my island. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't even see you there. Did you just come in?